Good morning. My name is Ashi Chakravarti.
Good morning.
Chance, you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, my name is Janice Nam. We're both seniors from Northview High School.
And today's our honor to introduce Mrs. Linda McCain. Mrs. McCain is currently serving as a board member for District Five on the Fulton County School Board, which is one of the only school boards in the nation whose members are all women. Mrs. McCain represents Alpharetta, Johns Creek, Northview, Chattahoochee, and Centennial High Schools. She's also very accomplished and experienced, serving as a member on the Board of Directors of the Fulton County Schools Employees Pension Fund, local school advisory councils, and Governor Nathan Deal's Education Advisory Board.
So, Ms. McCain, we'd like to start off today by asking you to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you do what you do.
That's great. Thank you so much for inviting me today. I would dare say that probably my position is the most closely associated to you as students right now. And you might not even understand or know how often my decisions impact you on a day-to-day basis. So after this, I'll probably get more emails from folks, right? So I got involved when my oldest daughter went to elementary school and realized that there was so much that needed to be done in the schools and in the classroom. And so I just kind of got started on my journey with being involved in public schools just for basic necessity because the teachers can't do it all. And so over the years, I just got to know more and more parents and got elected to different leadership positions at my local school. And then eventually was asked by a former board member, who I think you're going to hear from today, Liz Housman, Commissioner Housman, to potentially run for the school board. So at the time, the first time they asked, I said, "No, there's no way. I don't want to be involved at that level. It's too political." And then later on, I reconsidered and figured, "Well, I think I probably could add a very good balanced voice to the meetings." And I felt like I was pragmatic and rational and truly have all the students' best interests at heart. So I decided to raise my hand and I had Ms. Sanders, you know her, as one of my campaign managers. And the rest is history. Here we are 10 years later.
Yeah, thank you for that. So now I want to ask a question. It has two parts to it. So the first one is, how has the COVID-19 pandemic affected your work? And I'll follow up with the next part after.
Okay, so the COVID pandemic has changed everything, as you know. It's changed the way that we, you know, operate in our buildings, outside of our buildings. It's changed, obviously, the way that you all have your classrooms, whether you're staying home for the universal remote option or you're in face-to-face and wearing a mask in our building. It's just upended everything. And there are people who thought that, you know, there would come a time when bricks and mortar buildings were no longer needed. I think this has sped that up. I don't know that we're getting entirely away from having buildings in the future, but definitely it's going to start changing the way we plan out in the future. Because if this continues to be, you know, if pandemics continue to pop up and they'd say that they will become more frequent because everyone travels so much more, you know, intermingles in the world more readily now, then we need to be able to always have an option to have people stay home and stay safe. So at this point in time, I would just say that pandemic has changed everything about education. Some good, some bad, though.
Yeah. So, yeah, the next part of that is, what do you see planned for the spring 2021 semester with regards to virtual, remote, and in-person learning?
So from my understanding, our superintendent is going to make a recommendation at our board meeting next Thursday. And more than likely, we will continue on the same path we are now with folks who choose to go face-to-face, staying face-to-face. And then those who want to stay at home for the remote learning can do that as well. Some schools have organized themselves in a way that you have kids who, or teachers who only teach remote. And then at the school, there are teachers who only teach face-to-face. It's really hard on our teachers to teach both at the same time. And I know that you guys, I'm not sure if you're staying home and learning remotely or not, but the experience is different based on whether you're in the building or not. And so my guess will be he'll recommend that we just continue with what we're doing right now and give parents that option.
Well, Ms. McCain, a second ago, you mentioned that the pandemic has changed everything, some good and some bad. Would you mind elaborating on what the good is?
Well, I think the good is that we've had to adjust more quickly to the technology. And we've seen where our weaknesses are. And we've seen that, you know, we can have a good, robust virtual learning environment, but we have to put the effort in. So moving forwards, I think you're going to see some other options for Fulton County students in the years ahead where, right now, you don't have an option to be fully virtual. But I'm seeing, you know, we will have that option, I'm sure, in the future. And that would not have happened, especially this quickly, if we had not had the pandemic pop up. One thing I will say is that the pandemic did show that Fulton County, we have been very proactive in getting technology into your hands. And that's not true of all school systems. A lot of school systems were kind of caught, you know, not ready for the virtual environment. And they were scrambling to try to find devices. We pretty much, everybody had a device from middle school through high school. And then we ended up finding devices that were in our buildings to deliver to students third through fifth grade. And now we even have devices for second graders as well. Personally, a lot of folks don't like young children sitting in front of a screen all day. They don't believe that that's the right environment for kids to learn. And so, you know, we are trying to make sure that we balance learning with opportunities for kids to get up and move around. If they're in front of the screen all day, that's not obviously ideal. So parents have to be really involved when the kids are home and that young. They should be involved, even if they're, you know, we just want to make sure kids are using the technology appropriately. But I will just say that we were just really grateful that we had used SLOSS over the last five years to, you know, get those devices into your hands. And we weren't, you know, trying to play catch-up in that front, in that regard.
That's interesting, too. I didn't really realize that other counties weren't able to give devices to all their students. So it's nice to see how lucky that we are as students of like Northview and Centennial, Johns Creek, and Chattahoochee to have these resources.
And that's true throughout our whole county, our whole county. You know, we have, well, we're down to 90,000 some students. We should have had around 94, but because of the pandemic, there's about 4,000 students that currently are not enrolled. So, I mean, it doesn't matter what part of the county you're in, you have a device. Now, the one thing that we have worked hard on is getting access for the internet for students who don't necessarily have the financial means to have internet in their home. So, you know, we've given out a lot of hotspots. We've also partnered with other, you know, agencies in the community in those areas to make sure that kids can get on the internet. Because a device is only as good as access to the internet. So I will say that that is one thing that we're still making sure that we work through. And I think it's good right now, but I'm sure it's not perfect.
Yeah, okay. So to shift gears a little bit, can I ask you if there are any challenges that you specifically face as a woman in government?
I don't, I don't think I have felt any challenges because as, I don't know if Ms. Sanders mentioned, no, no. Your colleague mentioned that we're a woman board. All seven of us are women. Our board attorney is a woman. We are surrounded by women. And so we definitely, we understand each other. We know what our challenges are. We understand family commitments. So I think that, you know, my unique position, I cannot speak to any difficulties of being a woman in government. I'm sure that's not true for all women. But the position of a school board member is probably the most evenly represented for gender than any other elected position in the country. I believe about 45% of the school board members in this country are female. So even though, you know, Fulton County is unique in that all seven of us are women, there typically are, you know, probably half and half men and women on school boards. And everybody brings their own unique perspective. You know, men have their own unique perspective on school boards. I've worked with many of them, the Georgia School Board Association. We get together on a regular basis with other school boards, and other superintendents in a local collective called the Georgia Education Coalition. So, you know, we hear and we see and we have a male superintendent. So we understand the different viewpoints of men. And I'm not going to stereotype men and that they have different priorities, but sometimes they do. So I think, I think overall, I would not say that I have seen any kind of challenge in being a woman on Fulton County School Board.
Thank you. It's wonderful to hear that you've had a positive experience. I think Ash, you have the next question.
So it's been said that high achieving women can't have it all. How do you respond to that?
I don't agree with that. I think that everything takes balance. And you, of course, have to sometimes prioritize what your highest, you know, what you feel that you want to focus on the most. But I don't know that my position is one you can really take a look at and say, "I've had to give up anything because we're part-time." You know, our school board members are part-time. We don't do this 80 hours a week. Probably over the course of the month, we probably put in 40 to 60 hours, depending on the month during the virtual meetings. And we had a lot more to, I mean, it was uncharted territory. So it just took a lot more time to, you know, get up and moving that direction through virtual. So I would just say that I have not found that to be true. I don't believe I've had to give up anything.
Also shifting gears another time, did you happen to have any role models or mentors as you started to progress in the scope of being in the school board? And if so, how did they influence or inspire you?
So I definitely had a few mentors that encouraged me. One of them, as I mentioned, was my neighbor, who you'll speak with later, Commissioner Housman. And she just basically told me early on, you know, "You can do this. I think that you've got it in you. I see no reason why you can't run for a school board. And I don't see any reason why you wouldn't be a good school board member." So having somebody who, she herself, had been on the school board and she had been on the city council and was running for the commission, it made me believe in myself. And I think a lot of people, when they're facing an unknown, all they look at are the, their deficits and things that they don't know how to do. So it's really great when you have somebody come alongside you and kind of talk you through all those negative doubts that you have. And one of the things that definitely resonates when you're starting in uncharted territory is fake it until you make it, you know? Just even if you're not outgoing, which I'm not an outgoing person. And when you're on the school board, you have to speak in public. And when you're campaigning, you have to get out there and you have to, well, you used to go door-to-door. Now I don't know during COVID that you do that so much. But, you know, you have campaign events. And it used, you know, it was always, that's not my personality. I'm more of a doer behind the scenes. I like to get things done quietly and just focus on results. I don't, I'm not a showman. So just having people tell me that I could, you know, I could do it and believe in me helped a lot.
Yeah, it's really interesting. Yeah, so you've been serving government for several years. So how have you seen the landscape change, like, if at all? How have you seen the landscape for women in government change over those years?
I definitely have seen more women get elected to leadership roles in government over the last 10 years. And it's not just on school board now, you know? It's, women are being elected to, you know, higher levels, higher positions. And I think that just helps every woman who's younger or who hasn't even gone, you know, gone through school yet, look up and say, "Hey, they can do it. I can do it. I can see myself doing that." I'm sure that's true for any kind of threshold that women have crossed. Seeing somebody else do it before you makes you realize it can be done.
Yeah, so for students here in SLJC, do you have any advice to give to them? Or advice to give to young women specifically who are interested in government careers?
So I would just say that one of the first things is just learn, I mean, be interested in what it is you're trying to do, first of all. If you're not interested in education, why would you want to be on the school board? And then know what your motivations are. Why do you want to run? Do you have, you know, this real passion for that specific area of the government? Or are there some other reasons? You know, sometimes you can get sidetracked and become a one, they call it like a, like a one-issue candidate. And oftentimes, they don't make great public service leaders because they're focused on one thing. And most public roles that you're, most roles you're going to be elected into are varied. And there's all kinds of things that you need to know about. You have to be more of a generalist. You can't be real specific. So I would just say, know your motivations, know why you're doing it. Make sure you're interested and passionate because you're going to be spending a lot of the time thinking and learning and doing those, you know, those topics. So, but it's okay to, it's okay to not know everything when you first run because there is no way. I felt like I was drinking from a fire hose the first year when I got on the school board. Because even though I was a super-involved parent and had been involved in leadership positions at my local schools and even the local cluster of schools, it was nothing compared to when you're on the school board. And then all of a sudden, there are just so many more responsibilities and so many more, I guess, discussions that are not necessarily ever public discussions. And these are discussions that had to do with legal and personnel and land. And those are all in executive session. So there is just so much that you don't see in the public side of schoolboarding that you do once you get on the school board. So I would just say that any role that you run for is probably going to have a lot of, you know, a learning curve, a big learning curve.
Yeah, thank you for that. So do you believe it's important to have a diverse workforce? And if so, why?
I do. And I do believe that we have one in our school system. We definitely want to make sure we have the most qualified. But everybody brings a different perspective based on, you know, their lens they've looked at life through. So, you know, if you only have one lens you're looking at it, then you're going to miss some of the other opportunities that you might have. And I've noticed that sometimes even just being the newest, when I was the newest board member, I wasn't afraid to say, "I don't understand. Can you explain that?" And then other board members would say, "Yeah, you know what? I kind of just was going along with that, but I didn't understand it either." So it's like you have to be willing to say, be the one who doesn't know everything. Like the emperor who didn't have any clothes on, right? The little child's like, everybody else was pretending that that emperor had clothes on. And then the one little innocent child is like, "Why he doesn't have any clothes on?" So I think that when you have a diverse workforce and a diverse group of people in that governing body, that what you end up having is more complete thoughts and more complete solutions for whatever, you know, what the problems are that you need to solve.
Thank you. It's interesting to see how you're able to connect like emperor's new clothes with that, saying that you don't know and how helpful that is for other people. Moving on, what is the most rewarding thing about your job?
I think the most rewarding thing is knowing how much of an impact a great education has on every student in Bolton County. Because it doesn't matter, like, where you started. We want to get you all to a great ending place where you have so many options for your future. Like whether it's going into the military or going to a two-year school or a four-year prestigious university or just going right to the workforce. Like, we want you to control your destiny and your future. And having a great education is the platform that you start, the base you start that with. And so it's like so exciting to know that a lot of the decisions that we make are the reason why so many of our kids are so incredibly successful and have so many opportunities in front of them. So, you know, if we, if we had not provided that, if we didn't have a great public school system in Fulton County, you know, that would be truly, that would be truly sad for, you know, that next generation. They wouldn't have those opportunities. So I think that's what I'm most proud of.
Yeah, it's definitely interesting. Yeah, so just like a general question about your job. So what kinds of decisions do you make as a Fulton County School Board Member?
So I would say that the decisions that we make are kind of in four or five, we have about five key functions that I was thinking about. And the one, the one main function is we set the vision. So we are the ones who envision what Fulton County schools will be. And then to put that vision in place, we hire a superintendent. That's another one of our big functions, is we hire the superintendent and we evaluate him. We are the only ones who evaluate the superintendent. And then we do the how, or no, we do the what, and then he does everything else, the how, and we stay out of it. So the superintendent is the one who, you know, hires all the principals and hires, the principals hire the teachers. And he tells us how he's going to operate the schools to get the results that we have set in our vision, we expect. Another piece, a big piece of what we do in the school board is we set the policy. And we go through our policy review. About every four years, we go through every policy in Fulton County. And we make sure that they are, you know, legally up to date. The federal government will make direction that we have to adjust to, or the state, or just if there's been some local need to change a policy. Or if parents have asked us to bring up a policy, policy is actually affecting their kids. So that's another big piece of what we do. And then we set the budget, which is huge. I mean, we have taxing authority as a school board in Fulton County. That's not true of all states. Some states, the school board is told their budget by their county commission or some other agency. But in Fulton County schools, we set the millage for our budget. So currently, our budget for this, this school year is over a billion dollars. I don't know if y'all know that. We spend about $11,000 per student in general, although some students, it doesn't cost quite that much to educate and then some cost more. So that's the average, about $11,000 per student. So, you know, setting that budget is a huge piece of it. About 80% of our budget is salaries and benefits. So, you know, we're heavy, we're very intensive with personnel in Fulton County because obviously every 30 kids need a teacher. So, you know, we have a lot of employees. And that's a, you know, always a heavy lift. The budget process pretty much goes on all year long. So there's never really any surprises. And then, you know, one of the pieces that is so important is that we go out to the community and we talk to them about, you know, they, you know, we're going to be giving them a tax bill, basically. Your parents have probably seen their tax bill and they've looked at their line item and gone, you know, "Wow, that schools take a lot of money." But we do, you know? It's expensive to educate children, especially to educate them well. So we want to make sure we're running efficiently, though, and that we're not wasting taxpayer money. Taxpayers are the bosses of the school board. And so we want to make sure that we're providing a really great experience for the students and for the community. And the last thing I would say is that probably a lot of times when you guys get frustrated with, you know, the school calendar or maybe even like the times you go to school, et cetera, maybe not now because you're home doing universal remote. But, you know, when we have face-to-face school, you know, that's one of the complaints we get, probably more than anything, is about the school calendar. And it's not a huge part of what we do, but it is one that impacts probably the community more than anything is the school calendar.
That's interesting. You mentioned that 80% of the budget goes towards the personnel, which I think is awesome. A lot of teachers, faculty at our schools really do deserve to be compensated for what they do for us. Would you mind if I asked where the remaining 20% goes?
No. In fact, let me see here. I have our little brochure here. It's all on, it's all online, too, on our website. You can, you can find everything on here. Okay, so I'm going to have to put some, it's kind of dark in here. I can't see right now. This is what happens with older eyes. Okay, so professional and technical services are a very small part of it, like 1.8%. And that would be some of the training, et cetera, that, you know, we provide for our teachers. Utilities are a very small percent, but they're still in there. They're about 4%. And then we do some contracting out for other, you know, for expertise that we don't have. A lot of times, a lot of times it's in IT, we do that. And that's a small percentage, too. And that's just like under 1%. Let me see what this other is here. We have, some of these are so tiny, I would have to look this up here. But for instance, okay, so we have buses, you know, just getting kids to school, that transportation department. That's not, I mean, the buses themselves are not considered to be part of, you know, that's like capital, et cetera. So the transportation department has some personnel, but then it also has other parts of it that are expensive for us to run. So I would just say that it's a mix. You know, administratively, our administration for all of our schools is between, it's under 6%. So a lot of folks will sit there and act like, you know, "Oh, administration gets all this money." They really don't. Most of our money is actual personnel in our school buildings or people that support them. And so, I mean, I, I can show you this here. Do you want to look at, can you see? Can you see that or no? It's too dark. But just that's all the detail. Yeah, I can send this to Ms. Sanders and she can put it up there. But it definitely shows you that the majority is it does, it definitely shows you that the majority is going where it needs to go. And that's also a state law that we're required to spend, you know, most of our money on personnel. So if a school board wasn't going to do the right thing and was going to spend more money than they should on items that don't have the impact on the student education, then the state has put some guidelines in place as well. I believe they have a rule that you have to spend at least sixty-five percent of your money on personnel on benefits and salaries. Or in the class, actually, they say in the classroom, has to be spent in the classroom. I'm just trying to turn my phone, my light off, sorry. I had to turn my flashlight on my phone and now it's not turning on. There it goes. Okay.
Okay, yeah. So now, I guess in the last three minutes that we have, I'll just open it up to people if they want to ask a question in the chat, they can just put it in the chat.
Or if you'd like, you can unmute yourself and I'm just ask the question. It seems that we don't really have any questions coming in. Please don't be shy. You can add it into the chat box. Or you could probably, if you do have a question and you're just too shy to ask, you can email it to Ms. Sanders. And I'm sure Ms. Sanders could relay that to Mrs. McCain for you. Oh, we have a question. So Anastasia asks, what education did you seek after high school to allow you to work here today?
Well, my degree was in business. I, I went into business administration after college and it, it wasn't necessarily that I thought I was one day going to be a school board member. That was just what I was interested in. And then what it does lend you, you know, business is pretty broad. So it just kind of gives you a good lens to see a lot of the different portions of the school system. But the education side, I, I was not an educator. And I believe there was one school board member that has an education background. The rest of us all have other very diverse backgrounds. Most of them in business. So the educators are all on the staff side and then the school board itself, the ones who are setting the vision and being responsible to the stakeholders were all, you know, not in education. So, but I will say that my, my sister is still a teacher. She's actually a professor at Kent State University. So I definitely had a lot of interaction with educators growing up. I just myself did not want to be an educator. I still don't want to be an educator. It's a really hard job. So you guys need to give your teachers a lot of kudos. Lot of pressure on them right now because they are trying to teach students face-to-face and synchronously at the same time. And that's a really tough task for them. And we feel that they deserve all the accolades we can give them right now because we, we're asking a heavy lift and they're all learning a lot. And after this experience, I'm sure they're going to be so highly valued and sought after. They'll be able to go into a lot of other professions if they don't actually want to stay in teaching.
And so thank you for giving up your time today to talk a little bit about what you do as a school board member. So yeah, thank you so much. Have a good rest of your day if.
Thank you.
Yeah. Goodbye.
Bye.